So yes, Madam Mayor, Gordon Monroe. Our engineers prepared a memo and action items that the city are currently working on to address JR Meadows subdivision. And if it's all right with you, can you proceed with this presentation? Please do. Yes, definitely.
Hello, folks. So I'll just summarize what occurred and the plan that's been put in place. So early in January, there was significant rain and there was flooding that occurred on some neighboring properties to the JR Meadows subdivision. Those properties are located on Link Street. And the city was notified of the flooding on January 12th. That afternoon, the developer and the design engineer, AHS Engineering, were both out on site to take a look at what was going on. And actually, the next morning, eight o'clock in the morning, the developer, the design engineer, the contractor, city staff, and neighbors were on site to take a look at what was going on. And it was evident that there was an issue with the grading of the subdivision. And it was also evident that it was not particularly a design issue, it was a construction issue. And at that time, a immediate plan of action was put into place to alleviate the flooding. That included a temporary drainage ditch, which the contractor put into place that same day and which took away all the floodwaters. And then the contractor immediately also started to regrade that area. They had indicated that they had stored some of their material there. And then when they regraded, they regraded it incorrectly. And it did not meet design conditions. And so they took full responsibility, and the developer took full responsibility. And so they immediately began to regrade. And one of the things that we requested was that during that time, that that temporary ditch become part of the permanent grading, which they did. And we also asked that be surveyed. So it's what they call an as-built, which is exactly what it sounds like. It's, this is how it was actually built. So when that grading was completed and we had the as-built, we went back out to the spot. So that was a little bit later in the month. And had another meeting on site. And it's included again, the neighbors and the developer, the design engineer, the contractor, city staff, and also the mayor was on site. And we started talking about a long-term solution. And the neighbors rightly brought up that simply having the grading with the drainage way that was actually along the property line of some of the new subdivision could be suspect in the future. Neighbors could put up a fence, they might put up, they might mistakenly put yard debris over there, block that, that's causing flooding again. And so that was not considered a long-term solution. And so we put together another plan, has several steps that were in process of doing. And we did note that no additional building permits in that area would be allowed until a long-term solution was actually put in place. Because we don't want to have houses being built while we're trying to dig potentially ditches for pipe, if that's what we have to put in. So part of that long-term solution was also to verify the grading, again, doing an as-built when everything is done. And it may also include some additional easements on specific properties, most likely will. And the development engineer was tasked with providing a design for that long-term solution, which gets submitted to the city and gets reviewed by the city before it's accepted. So it's, it is a plan that will be reviewed. And that is all in process. There was also put in, in to place a clean line of communications between the city and the neighbors. The neighbors have all provided Christie, actually, their emails. And so the line of communication goes through Christie as the interim city manager and goes out to all of the neighbors so that there's a clean line of communication and everybody gets the same information. The neighbors would like to be apprised of the long-term solution and would also like to meet again in the field. So that is a brief summary of what's going on with JR Meadows subdivision.
Thank you, Gordon. May I, my counsel, do you have any questions? Okay, before we go into questions from the council, I just wanted to clarify that I was at that meeting, I was not participating in any of the discussion. I was there primarily and only to observe and understand what is happening. Other than that, counselors, do you have any questions for Gordon Monroe?
Yeah, I do. This is Grant. Gordon, whose property would be affected by the easement? The neighbors or the JR Meadow property?
JR Meadow property.
And exactly what would be, what, what's the reason for that easement?
Well, that easement would be tied to whatever the long-term solution is, which probably is going to include a drain, area drain with some piping that goes to the street. And so the easement would be over that to allow for access and operation and maintenance of that system.
And who, who would maintain that system?
That is in discussion. And if it's a hard pipe system, it's potentially that the city would be maintaining that.
So if the city has to maintain that, is there going to be any kind of compensation from the contractor throughout time for the city works department having to maintain this?
No, there wouldn't be. Through any develop, there's always a, a storm drainage system that the city inherits as part of the development process. And the cities, the city is responsible for that drainage system, just like they're responsible for the water, the sewer, and the streets for operation and maintenance into the future.
So has, in this particular area, have foundations for houses already been poured?
No, we, these are, if, if we have the, the subdivision, it's lots five through 10, and those have not been poured, and there's no building permits that have been allowed on those lots.
So then, it is possible then to completely to lower that grade to get the water to slope back towards JR side than other, than going to the neighbor's side at this time?
Yeah, that's already been done.
Okay, so.
That was the original design. And so the contractor has gone back in and regraded that to the design, plus they left in an additional swell.
So then if that's already been regraded back to where it was supposed to be per plan, then why is a drainage system or a easement then necessary?
Well, flooding did occur. And so we want to make sure that that doesn't occur in the future. This would be very similar to, we have a system very similar to this that is south of Taff Street. This is just north of Taff. And off Taff Street, we actually knew that there was somewhere in there, there were drainage pipes. We didn't know where. And during the, the construction, they found those. And there's actually an area drain back there. And there's the piping system back there that the city will now maintain. So it'd be very similar to that, so.
So then, once this is all, the, the new design is all done and approved and all of that, and then the city allows building permits for, what did you say, five through 10, I believe what you said, house or lots? Is it then now, I would think then it should be required of the builder to put drainage and sump pumps underneath all of those homes?
Oh, well, the, so, the building permit process, which that would be part of, is a separate permit that's done through Yamhill County. But all, all the homes actually have foundation drains typically.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm talking about an actual, some kind of drainage under a sump pump and everything, under the house, inside the foundation of the home, not just the outside.
Right. Again, that's, that's a building permit that's through the county, city doesn't review those designs.
Okay, so that's nothing that the city can actually require then, over and above?
No, that's, that's a different process.
Okay. Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Gordon, can I jump in real quick? Sorry, Kathy, are you trying?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just a quick question. So did you do, did, was a survey completed on the rest of the subdivision in terms of grade? Or was it just this one area that?
No, we asked them to verify everything.
Because you do have some foundations already poured and one house already built. How does that factor in if you go and discover that that wasn't, I mean, imagining the whole subdivision was built to the same grade, and it's probably all incorrect?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't make that assumption. For one, they, they only stored material in one, one location, which is, happens to be the location where there was an issue, and they didn't grade that correctly. They did provide us, just today, late today, some as-built of the grades on every single lot. And I've looked at it briefly. And from that brief review, it looks like the grades on the other lots met design.
So I got another question for you, Gordon. Going on, Kevin just said that the house has already been built, as far as the grading and the, the water and stuff. I personally walked down there and walked on that area and probably sunk in the ground six to eight inches in quite a few areas around the house. So you're saying that particular home is graded properly and drainage is all done right?
The grading is, is, from what I've seen of the survey, the grading is correct.
Hmm, okay. I'm just, like I say, I personally was there, and it just seemed like it was very swampy, mushy, a lot of water still in the area of around the home, the house. The, I guess that's the model house is what they've already built there, is what they're calling that.
Okay. Yes, that's the model house. They, they have one lot of records, so they're allowed to build a house initially, and that's what they did.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, I just, yeah, it might be worthwhile for the city to go and check that out, even on that particular one, because it just seemed like there was a lot of water in that particular, the property around that home.
Yeah, they're, they took survey shots on every single lot. And it showed the grading meets the design, even on that lot.
All right, okay, thank you.
Gordon, this is Shirley. When do you anticipate submitting the proposed solution, design solution for the drainage to the city for their review and approval?
Actually, a, the draft of that was delivered like five o'clock today, so I haven't looked at it. So I'll be coordinating with Brian. We'll be reviewing that. So that'll be occurring this week.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that that was also delivered to the city. If it wasn't, I can get that to the city or request that the design engineer send it to the city.
If you could do that, Gordon, that would be great. Nothing came today. Actually, our hours until four, so if you've got it at five, that might be, let me know tomorrow by noon or about to see if it's.
Gordon, I have a couple of comments and questions. You know, one, you said the city would be approving this design. Who exactly does that mean?
Typically, that means that both Brian and myself review the design.
Also, it, it concerns me quite a bit that water and flooding and this grading issue was one of the points that was brought up much early on. And frankly, I had a lot of concerns for. You know, to say that we've had a lot of water is, I, I feel like it kind of softens this blow a little bit, but frankly, we live in Oregon, so this is not an extraordinary amount of rain that we've had. These, these issues are real for these people, and I don't want to minimize it and say that, well, you know, we, we messed up on the grading and, well, it did rain a little more. And thirdly, that, well, you know, they had some storage equipment or whatever the situation was in place here. I really am very concerned that we don't have a solid solution here. These are the new residents of Carlton, and we're stomping on our previous residents of Carlton. And frankly, these people's homes that are under construction right now are already being So this, this project just has a lot of concerns for me. And it's, I don't think this is a rare situation that, oh, this was not a once-in-a-lifetime rain that we get in Oregon. This was, this is routine for that site. And so I don't know, maybe that's more of a comment than a question to you, but I really think that all of us need to take a very hard look at this and not one or two people make this decision for the entire community, who's going to have to live here once this builder's done.
I understand, we, nobody, I believe, is taking this lightly. I was simply stating the occurrences. I was not trying to downplay it. I don't think the developer was trying to downplay it either. And they were there the very day that it occurred and were immediately addressing the issue. And this, this is, this is something that we understand is a concern. This was, I think the flooding occurred because the construction was done incorrectly. And we're requesting that the developer, development team address that. And they are.
Sorry, just to clarify, when you say construction, do you mean the planning was done correctly or the actual work of grading was done correctly?
The design, the design showed that the grading was such that it flowed from the west to the east, and it met the existing ground at the west. So there was, the intent of the design was that the existing grade on the west where it butts up to the neighbors would not change. And in this area, the construction was not done per the design.
So the design was correct, just the, the actual working was incorrect?
They left it high.
Okay.
And to piggyback on Guillermo's comments here, I would, I assume we have highly professional people coming in here to start these developments. So again, you know, great concerns about the quality of work we're already experiencing on this site.
Okay, I think, is everybody, are there any more comments?
Yeah, I would like to, to comment on too, that as what I would just add about the quality of people working on these sites, is this going to be a continuation problem that we're going to encounter with the JR2? I mean, they couldn't get it right the first time, so are we going to see this again the second time in the next development that they're wanting to build? And then if they graded it wrong, who inspected it and then signed it off and said that it was graded right?
So the inspection occurs in multiple ways. The design engineer actually is responsible for certifying that the subdivision is constructed per design. And they had done some survey work to certify that. The subdivision is also reviewed by the city. Typically, we are looking at the link facilities, which are the water, wastewater, and the And we do not perform a survey of the site. So there were errors in that process.
So after we grade a site, we don't go back and check it to make sure that it's exactly to the blueprint?
That's a certification that is provided by the design engineer. And they will never be exactly to the design.
But we're not talking about a half inch or something here, right? We're talking a couple of feet.
This was significant.
Absolutely. So who is the design engineer? This provided by the builder?
The design engineer is the design engineer for the developer. In this case.
Now, you say it's not, it's not graded exactly, so why is it not? I mean, I can see one or two inches, but in this case, two feet, so why is it not inspected after they do the grading? Let's get the grading done, let's then redo it, inspect it, make sure that it's, I would say, close, within a couple inches?
Yes.
Six inches maybe, but not two feet?
Right.
I mean, that's a, that's a concern, because if we're going to go through this again in JR2, we've got problems. I mean, we've got problems with this developer, the design, the builder, the people that are doing the work. They don't seem to be up to snuff, so to speak.
And certainly, there's a margin of error as, as professionals in their fields that an engineer is allowed per, per what, state guidelines? So do we know what that margin of error should have been? Certainly not two feet, right?
No, it's not two feet. Everybody agrees that that is a significant error.
So I guess my question is, how are we going to prevent this from the rest of that subdivision and then also prevent it from these same people that are going to build JR2?
Well, we have required them to do a survey showing the building site grade on every single lot of this development.
This is af, this is after they, after they complete their grading, they now have to do another survey to make sure that it's correct within state parameters?
There's no particular state parameters, but yes, we, we ask them to provide that.
Then what are they providing if there's no state parameters? I mean, what do they have to hold their tolerances to, plus or minus six inches or what?
I would say that they're going to be plus or minus probably three, three, four inches.
Okay, so how do we hold them to that?
The survey.
And if the survey comes back at eight inches, then what happens?
Regrade.
Okay, I'm just wanting to make sure that the city is going to enforce that, because this has been an inconvenience for the neighbors already, and I, I just don't want to see that happen again in the next subdivision that we're going through with.
I'm also still concerned that, Gordon, I believe you said that the existing structure that will become the model is on, as designed? So how can one construction lot be correct and all of the rest is where misses? I'm concerned about that.
Oh, that's, that's fairly easy. I, you know, they, they had a, they piled up a bunch of soil in one spot because they're re, they're grading the entire site. So they, they missed, they didn't grade it correctly in that one area, but that doesn't necessarily affect the entire site. This, if you look at the site, it's fairly level. I mean, there is up and down, but you, once you've moved out from those lots in question, you, you could have everything else correct.
The neighbors are on that side of the site.
Wrap this up, please. And I, I understand that there are some more questions on this. We've all been dealing with it. Gordon, thanks for your explanation up to this point. What I would suggest everybody do is think about what you were asking. Put some questions down, write them down, and we can see if we can get them answered that way. So that we can get the questions answered. I think they do need answers, but we need to move along right now. And which takes us to citizen comments, which Christie's got some stuff to add into that before we go into comments. So yes, Madam Mayor, for citizen comments, I do want to publicly say, after the packet was already delivered to all the councilors, we did have three citizens. Grant, could you do me a favor and stay on unless you speak? Grant? Thank you. So after the packet was already delivered to all council, for the last two days, we did receive three letters from neighbors impacted by the JR development flooding. Those letters were immediately given to council and they will become a part of the permanent record of this meeting so that the public understands that that is there. We will also be addressing the fact that our current process is that public comment is only on non-agenda items, and council's going to discuss that later on and maybe look at some changes so we can have two sections, I'll explain it later. One on agenda items and one on non-agenda items. Typically, public comment for citizens is for something they'd like to see council look at in the future, like a street or a pothole that isn't on the agenda. So we'll, you guys will be discussing that later, but I do want the people that submitted letters to know that their letters were seen by council. That's why the council was doing very good questions with Gordon and that they will become part of the permanent record. Thank you. Thank you. So we are at citizen comments, which allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not otherwise in the agenda. When you, if you want to speak, please state your name and your street address. And typically, comments in this section are, are limited to three minutes unless you need additional time. There may be, but we're going to be running short on time right tonight. Anyway, are there any questions or comments coming through? Any?
I have a question.
True. Susan?
Yes. I have, I have a, I have some long-term concerns for the city to address. I'm, I'd like the city of Carlton to begin planning immediately for the long-term issues of the pocket park being built in a wetland at the north end of JR Meadows and for the drainage easement at the south end of JR Meadows bordering the school property. Does the city want to accept the inevitable long-term costs of maintaining a park sited in the lowest point of a white, of a wetland and that floods annually and additionally is along a drainage that is now, wasn't previously, but now is conducting the entire runoff of JR Meadows Phase 1? Is the city committed to keeping catchment grades free and clear of debris on drainage easements between school property and homes in the subdivision? Are public works crews available to make sure these grades are clear and can accept considerable upstream flow each time it rains? Or will the city be being paying year after year forever for costly remediation as a result of unreasonable maintenance burdens due to potential oversight and design and implementation of those facilities? Should the city be considering requiring an HOA ownership of these public areas to alleviate the burden of expensive irradiation? You could consider an HOA with a public gas access for the public parks, so at least the public could still enjoy that facility. But I am very concerned for the long-term costs for the city if we accept these easements and these parks into our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do not see any at this time.
Okay, thanks. In that case, we will shut down citizen comments and move along to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion or comments on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, consent agenda, any abstentions?
Wait a minute. Linda, I'm sorry, I miss, I, I approve it. I missed that. Sorry.
Yeah, okay, so the consent agenda has been approved with unanimous vote. I didn't hear any votes, so I'm going to give it to you. Okay, ordinances, resolutions, discussions, and action items. The first item on here is the city council vacancy appointment. Yes, Madam Mayor, today you're going to read two candidates, so you can proceed forward or back. Okay, do I have a motion on the?
Yes, I move that we nominate applicant Jamie Edlin for the vacant position, city council position for the remainder of the term vacated by Linda Watkins.
I second that.
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there, shall we have a vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? I think we should do a voice vote if we're going to be taking our life to capacity. Amy, could you do a roll call for the votes?
Roll call vote it is. Councilor Maher, what do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Councilor Erickson, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Councilor Brendel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilor Skipper, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, council president, Ward Mullen?
Aye.
And Mayor Watkins? We have six ayes and no nays. Motion passes.
Thank you. Was this Amy? Direct Jamie and have her read from those.
Jamie, if you can unmute yourself. And Grant, mute yourself, please. Thank you. All right, Jamie, are you unmuted? There you are. So in our packet, I'm not sure if you have the electronic copy in front of you. On page forty-two is the oath of office for a city councillor.
Okay.
Would you like to read or repeat the oath?
I, I can just read it if you'd like.
That works just fine. Just place your name in there where it says name in bold, use insert your own name.
Okay. Do I need to put my hand up or anything?
No, you don't, if you want to, you can, but it does.
No. Okay. I, Jamie Edlin, the undersigned duly elected city councillor for the city of Carlton, do hereby solemnly swear, I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America and the state of Oregon and the Charter of the ordinances of the city of Carlton, and I will faithfully perform my duties as city councillor to the best of my ability.
Thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Carrie, for your service and your dedication to the city, we do appreciate it, but we want to welcome Jamie aboard, and she is now our seventh councillor and voting member of the city council.
And Carrie, don't listen, you're going to get out easy because I'm sure they're going to be.
Good job, Jamie.
We need help.
No, thanks, Carrie. All right.
Okay, the, we are at the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-seven three oh, ecology franchise agreement. Um, yes, Mayor Watkins. So Kathy Maher asked us to delay this to this meeting so we can have the rate sheet attached. It's now attached on here. And I have our city attorney, Walt Gallow, if you'd like to add anything on while you guys get to the second reading.
Um, mayor and members of the council, I don't have anything to add to my comments from last meeting. I think this is, this franchise ordinance brings the Carlton ordinance into line with the majority of the other ordinances in the city with, that surround Carlton. It is, I think it is a workable ordinance since, and I have no, no the suggestions that I've made have all been incorporated into the, into the draft.
Are there any questions or comments on the ordinance?
Madam Mayor, this is Dave Larmouth from Ecology. I just wanted to let you know for the record that I'm here if, if anyone does have any questions that I'm able to answer. Just wanted to let you know I'm here.
Aye. Do I have a motion, please? Somebody?
What exactly are we motioning? Are we, can you explain?
Do I have a motion to approve the ecology franchise agreement?
The motion would be to read the ordinance for the second time by title.
So I move, I move to read ordinance number twenty twenty dash seven three oh, ecology franchise agreement by title only.
Second.
It's, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Walt, could we get you to?
Absolutely. Ordinance number, ordinance number twenty twenty dash seven thirty and ordinance relating to solid waste management in the city of Carlton, Oregon, including, but not limited to the environmental health and sanitation aspects and including, but not limited to granting an exclusive franchise to provide solid waste service within the city, providing for recycling, reuse, and other resource recovery and waste reduction services, creating new provisions, repealing all other ordinances and resolutions in conflict with this ordinance, including but not limited to ordinance five oh seven prescribing penalties and prescribing an effective date.
So the appearance legislature. Could we have a vote, please? Are, is there a motion to accept this ordinance? Somebody make a motion?
I move to accept the ordinance as read.
All in favor?
Roll call vote, mayor.
Okay. Councilor Maher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilor Edlin, how do you vote?
What's that? I'm I will abstain since I just got on and haven't had a chance to read, so don't, no vote.
Thank you. Counselor Erickson?
Aye.
Counselor Brendel?
Aye.
Counselor Skipper?
Aye.
Counselor, council president, Ward Mullen?
Aye.
And Mayor Watkins?
Aye.
We have six ayes, no nays, and one abstention. Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on. I am seeing memo of understanding with Yankel Carlton Together Cares. Amy and Christie will give some background on this.
Sure. Mayor and council, this draft version came before you, I believe, in December, maybe January, or excuse me, maybe November's. It was a draft version that we drafted, you guys looked at, read out, and then we actually brought it to YCTC and they have added just a few minor modifications to that draft. They added part of the scheduling would be done through their executive director and the city as opposed to each individual coach reaching out to the city to schedule their time slot for the practice fields. That can make things a little bit smoother on both party side. Scheduling's aren't always the easiest thing, but this will keep us our insurance liabilities. They've already provided that. And so we can make sure we have a safe playing field and we can keep track of any damages that might occur by having a better scheduled use of events with YCTC and any other organization that could be using it. Is there any questions?
Oh, yeah, Hans is online.
Yep, I, I've unmuted myself. If anyone has questions, I'm Hans Nordstrom. I'm the current volunteer board president of YCTC, so if council members or anyone else have any questions about our, our role in this, I'm happy to answer those.
No questions? Okay. Do I have a?
I move to approve the memo of understanding with Yankel Carlton Together Cares for the calendar year of twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is, now is this another roll call vote, Walt?
No, you can do this by motion, mayor.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Uh, the motion passes.
I'd like to thank the city for forming, or at least helping along with this partnership, so thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, I am getting water rate analysis back with Galardi Associates. Before you, the Deb Galardi, who has done our water rate analysis for many years. Yeah, the last one was done in two thousand eighteen. And as you know, one of the biggest complaints in our city is our water rates. So we want her to revisit it and bring in our current projects, including the wastewater. This here is her scope of work, which will tie her to a contract to move forward. She will bring back to council three separate options. Typically, she's going to be meeting with the mayor and I, discussing bringing them forth for you guys to make a decision on how we're going to proceed with the rates for this year. And just for your information, when they do a rate analysis, we have to have our capital improvement plan already set in place. We'll be working the water sewer fund and the capital improvement fund. And she takes into account any water or sewer projects that needs to be financed by the city and then brings it forth to council. and then brings it forth to council, and then council will decide how to proceed. So we are recommending that you move forward with this rate analysis. This is for us as it's an independent and the city's not determining the rate. Any questions?
What's the projected hours and cost to this next?
The cost is $10,300. And basically, she'll update our financial plan, she'll be meeting, she'll come to council at least twice. And on this sheet, you'll see on the back, it has her projected hours in the table one. Project management for the financial plan, which is very, it's very, Jeremy's gonna love it. It's very complicated Excel, 28 hours, and then the meetings are roughly 12.
Christie, I have a question. It's for a five-year period. Are we at the end of a rate period? Or when would this study, once we decide a way, when would that take effect?
It'll take effect for the July 1 rates. So we want to take a really hard look at it. We've got about $6 to $8 million worth of project coming up on wastewater that are required by DEQ. We already put a big rate increase last year, but we need to make sure that we're not overcharging and that we are covering everything to get these improvements done. The water is pretty stabilized at this point. It's just cost of living.
So just to clarify, her previous, I'm assuming they did a five-year rate study five years ago, and that's in July?
Two years ago. We're revisiting it as we refine the projects and we're moving forward, and there's been some financial shifts, and we really want to make sure we're getting the best rate possible out to our citizens.
Thank you.
As far as the last two years, how did it work out with the budget and how much we billed the citizens? Was it close? Was it far? Like, I'm just wondering how, how well they did it.
They did really well, almost spot on. The interesting component, as you know, two years ago, we changed the sewer method to a consumption-based, and it was not changed to increase revenue. It was supposed to be revenue neutral, and what it is doing is we're trying to conserve the water, which is something separate than the rates, and it was almost spot on. The estimates came out probably a lot closer than I would have thought.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, another question, Christie. Is the agreement, the, the agreement with Water and Light that's currently, you know, happening and in talks with, you know, providing us water during the construction process, is, is that going to be completely separated from her rate survey, or is she gonna look into what costs those look like also?
We've got a tentative draft. That's a good question for Deb Galardi. I, I, she's going to have to consider that contract when we take that water plant offline and what that's going to impact. So it's going to have some moving parts. Like, you don't have a definite, but that would be a good question for Deb, and I could get back to you with that information.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think Councillor Skipper's right on that. I think we need to make sure she does figure that factor.
Yeah, I agree. Any other questions or comments?
So bottom line, I'm asking, how much do we think water's going to increase in 2021?
Water or?
Water, sewer, the whole, the whole thing.
On the last analysis, it would, sewer would have gone up another 15%. Water would be at the cost of living and plus 3%, so it'd be roughly 5%. It always goes up cost of living, but I think we're really close on the water, but depending on this contract with MAP Water and Light, but sewer is, we need to get moving on those projects because the fines from DEQ were going to far outweigh, and that would also be passed on. So we're kind of caught in the middle.
Well, basically, with this, this 15% increase in sewer, is it basically because past Carlton government kicked aside and didn't take care of the problem years ago? And now the current population of town is having to pay for this problem?
Grant, that's a very good question. Carlton, in fact, the mayor has tasked the staff to create a water timeline so that we can tell you the story even more thorough. But for years, the city of Carlton did nothing for their infrastructure. And as Chad Olson got here in 2012, a lot of you are newer to town. You did not know how brown the water was in the city of Carlton. Our infrastructure was failing. There had been no water rate increases to finance those projects. People would bring in jars of brown water. And Chad Olson was very instrumental in building in a rate structure that has taken that problem off the table. We used to have to put fire sprinklers because we didn't even have the right fire flow up in Carlton Press, and that is all remedied. We've made significant changes. But you are correct that these current councils have been tasked, and our current citizen population have been tasked with paying the burden of bringing the infrastructure back up to code. And the DEQ is mandating, and they have given us a final letter that we have to get this done. In particular, that lagoon needs to be raised, and then we are going to be redoing the concrete pump station, and there, there's a lot of requirements to meet for the lagoon. So it was from lack of action, and now we are having to take care of it now. Does that help?
Yes, but I just, so somehow, somehow, the city needs to explain that to the, to the population of town.
That is correct. We are working.
I mean, people are pissed. They're thinking water. They don't understand it. Somehow, we need to communicate that to the public of how and why we are where we're at today. I mean, I get it. I totally understand, but we need to convey that to the public to let them know some way, somehow.
I do agree. That's why we're starting the process early, or we should have a draft of a timeline of that by the end of this week. And we're going to be working on that to really create a marketing message so that people do understand, and they will understand just as short as six years ago how our infrastructure was and what we've done to improve it, which is why we're having a shortage of housing, because now everybody wants to actually live in our community with our good, clean water. So, but I do agree with you, Grant, and I know that it's just one of Mayor Watkins' passions. We hear it loud and clear through our community about the water rates, and we're going to do whatever we can to make sure we're accurate. Yeah, they, and I know, Christie, I think the week after the election practically, we had started talking about this, and she just, the staff started working on doing the research and setting out a timeline. I haven't seen it yet, but that's because they're still trying to get it finished. But that's, that was one of the things that I asked for and wanted to see was something that very clearly laid out. What had, I keep looking at this phone, like, but that's, it's, that's one of the things that we asked, that we asked the staff to do is put it together so that it's a more, a little more clear understanding of how we got to where we are today.
So with this, Christie, is this something that, I know you're working on it, a timeline and all that. Is this something that's going to be put together to communicate to the public, when I say public, the town of Carlton, some kind of explanation, graph, whatever you want to do, that's going to show up in their water bill so they can actually see it?
Yes, so we are going to include it in every water bill. When we changed the consumption rate method, we also included it then, but sometimes they don't read the inserts. So we're also going to do, we now have the ability to do a mass pushout to everybody's email. So we're going to do that also. They have a tendency to read their email over the inserts, but we are going to do a mass communication marketing of the water and sewer.
Okay, that, I, yeah, that would be great. I just, somehow, we need to get it out there to the public that this is why, why we're where we're at. That's, I guess.
I totally agree. And we could probably take either a meeting or whatever to do informational piece or informational education for us so that we, on the council, understand what's going on and we have, when somebody asks us, we will have that information to get a little more in-depth. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the rate water analysis contract for the Lardy and Associates? Come on, you guys.
I'll make a motion.
I move that we approve it.
Go ahead, Grant.
Hey, I move that we approve this and carry on. I don't know if that's the right wording or not, but that's what I got.
Walt can fix it. I'll second that.
I would infer from that motion that, that, that the motion is to approve the, that a personal services agreement in standard format that the city has be entered into based upon the scope of work that's been presented into the council.
And is there a not to exceed dollar amount on that?
There is.
There is the amount, $10,300.
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you, Walt. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Next. Motion passes. Hey, I would just change the agenda. Yes. So, um, with the comments that we received out of the packet for JR Meadows, it came to light and that are in our citizen comment section that we have been very interested that it is for non-agenda items. So something they'd like to see in the future. But after some feedback just this last week, we really would like council to maybe discuss changing that public comment to have two sections in there. One are for agenda items and one are for non-agenda items, giving them two opportunities to have comments. It still would be limited to three minutes, and the League of Oregon City says that it should be a totality of 30 minutes not to go over. So it's more of a discussion, or you could do an action and change that for the March meeting. So if you have any questions for me, or you guys can just discuss it on what, how you feel about it.
So, so I understand it correctly, Christie. It's, it would be two different times in the meeting, so.
It would be in the same section, but we call out non-agenda items and give them an opportunity, and then we would call out agenda items. Not to exceed 30 minutes in totality.
It would be, it would be at the same point that it already is at kind of the beginning of the meeting.
I'm sorry, Kevin, I didn't hear you.
It would be at the same, it would stay in the same schedule as it already currently is, right?
Correct.
So you'd split it out 15 minutes for one and 15 minutes for the other. Is that the purpose?
It is the purpose, but oftentimes, there's not much non-agenda items. Also, you could just share it. It wouldn't be said in that. It'd just be setting a 30-minute time limit at the end. And then it would be up to the mayor, depending on how that worked out, for how many comments there are. If you have one comment under the agenda items and none under the non-agenda items, probably, if need be, you could, I guess, let the whole 30 minutes go to the agenda item, or, you know, whatever. If there were multiple requests for comment on each one, then we would maybe just hold one each, each section of 15 minutes. So make sure everybody got, got at least something to say. Yeah, our biggest goal here is to have as much voice from our citizens as possible. The problem right now is that on agenda items, if, if it's not a public hearing, the public has no way of commenting on or making any, having any input on what the agenda item is. So this is trying to make a way that citizens can come in and actually comment on something that might already be on the agenda that they want to make a comment on.
Are we looking for a motion and a vote on this?
Well, yeah, it's, I guess we were starting out to see if anybody had any questions or a discussion about it. If we want to be able to implement it by March, we would need a motion and a vote this evening.
I have a comment. Is there a possibility that we could do that before the ordinances and after the ordinances, something like 15 minutes before and 15 minutes after? That could possibly give the chance of people to comment on things we discussed in the ordinances and maybe before, if we have the, if we have that time?
That, I can see your point there, but your action items will already be completed by then. So be commenting on completed actions, and they might want to have a voice before those action items take place, but that's for you guys to consider.
Yeah. That makes sense.
I have a question as well. I, I think on some of our major topics and issues we have to deal with, 30 minutes could be a little restrictive. Do we have the flexibility in extending that to be sure all citizen comments are heard?
The mayor does have flexibility, but then she would have to really hold them to that three minutes. The other opportunity we are really trying to get on for people who have more to say than three minutes is to provide it in writing so that it can become part of the packet prior to the packet being delivered. That's another opportunity to have a voice, but it would be nice to have both opportunities.
Agreed. Thank you.
Do you have any, from the League of Oregon Cities, do you have any kind of, is this a fairly normal, typical thing for city councils, for agenda, non-agenda, or is it pretty typical?
It is, it varies, Kevin, across a lot of cities. I took a look at several others and then went to the league for the model, and they suggested that for people who want more. Some cities are more restricted and some are more open. So it's a model policy that they set, but cities can, it's not required. I guess what I would like to propose is that we look at doing this with a maximum of 30 minutes for public comment both ways, and try it for a while and see how that's working out. And if we feel the need to make some changes or adjustments, we can come back and revisit it and make some adjustments.
I, I think that could work as long as the flexibility to remain on a very contentious topic that we could make an exception for that evening. And I think opening up the written communications would help alleviate some of that as well.
Yeah, I'd like to encourage the written communications mainly because a lot of people who are, who can do that or who will write. who are, who can do that, or who will write are, if they're like me, they're better off writing than they are speaking. So, so I'd like to see that and see the folks that have that, that much to say, be comfortable with saying it, and then that way, we have it in writing, so that's the other part, is you can look back and refer, instead of trying to remember what somebody said five minutes ago, and you've heard a whole bunch already, so you can look back and actually refer to the written comment and written record.
I have a hard time seeing any downside to it. I mean, I think the more opportunity we give for the public to, you know, address issues and things that we either agenda or non-agenda, sorry, is great, I think.
Yeah.
Giving them a voice is better than.
Yeah. Anybody else? Us? Motion? Let's see, if we were making a motion, what would it be? Motion to approve the change in the process for public comment to include agenda and non-agenda items.
I'd make a motion to accept that change as Christie stated it.
I'll second.
Can I propose that we add something to that? We left out the 30-minute limitation.
Um, we have a motion in a second, Shirley, so it would have to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Walt, isn't that an amended at this point?
I think Shirley is asking whether the maker of the motion will amend it to include
Oh, okay.
A normal.
Yes, please, Counselor Mullen.
30-minute limitation subject to the mayor's discretion to extend.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is this an aye or a roll call? All?
Ayes in this.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Thank you. It is time for us to use script. Yes, at this time, we will be adjourned to executive session pursuant to ORS 1926602I to review and evaluate the employment-related performance. No. To review? Yes, where is it? Consider employment of an officer, employee, staff member, or agent of the city. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend this executive session. All other persons, if you want to stay with us, will be put into the waiting room with Zoom, or you may, but you will be asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any matter addressed during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the executive session as previously announced. No final action or decision will be made in the executive session.
Mayor, will you please give me a few moments to get the waiting room situated?
You betcha.
I have to do one at a time.